Now seven, it's now seven oh three and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover.
Present.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
And Ms. Jane.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Demming, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few board salutes. Ms. Fosdick.
District two oh four elementary school robotics tournament. The board salutes district two oh four elementary school students and staff who recently participated in the robotics tournament held at the Burkett Freshman Center. The tournament hosted a total of one hundred and three teens over the two-day event. We also salute Director of Innovation and Instructional Leadership, Brian Jovanini, for serving as tournament organizer. We have some fun names here of the teams. Team Fry Foxes, Peterson Radical Robots, Biltas Slapshot Supremes, Biltas Team Wars, Welch Titans, and Brookdale Center Circles captured the team champion awards. Fried Chicken, Biltas Slapshot Supremes, and Brookdale Pizza Warriors received the skills awards. The judges awards went to the White Eagle Cyberfish. The energy award was granted to the Gombert Robotic Gators. The excellence award was given to Young Lightning Tech. And the sportsmanship award was presented to the McCarty Monkey Mayhem. Teams White Eagle Evolution, Clow One Shot Hot Dogs, and Owen R. Two Bots accepted the Create Awards. Congratulations to all the robotics teams and club sponsors.
It was very fun. I encourage people to go to those in the future. I know some of us went to the other ones, so, okay. Ms. Grover.
Niqua Valley Senior Achieves Rank of Eagle Scout. The board salutes Niqua Valley Senior Anikesh Singh for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest advancement rank in scouting. Anikesh's Eagle Scout Service Project involved building and installing benches at the Iskon Temple in Naperville. Congratulations to Anikesh on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout.
Mr. Carubus.
Students head to DECA National Competition. Congratulations to the district two oh four students who recently participated in the state DECA competition. Four students from Niqua Valley, seven students from Matea Valley, and five students from Wabonzi Valley are moving on to the national DECA competition taking place in Florida next month. Good luck to all the students and their advisors at Nationals.
Ms. Jane.
Wabonzi Valley student invited to the Capitol in Springfield. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley freshman Adil Barkat and his robotics team for being invited to the Capitol in Springfield by State Representative Barbara Hernandez. The students have been working on the passage of HB three seven five-two, which declares the third Friday in March as Robotics Day to encourage students and school districts to engage in robotics-based activities and to engage students with the study of mathematics and science. Following the meeting with the Wabonzi students, Governor JB Pritzker issued a proclamation declaring March tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as STEM Education Day. Congratulations.
Thank you for all of those. Next, we have our student report by Kushi Vaschanu from Niqua Valley High School.
Hello and good evening. My name is Kushi Vaschanov and it is my pleasure to represent Niqua here tonight. I am so excited to tell you what the Wildcats have been up to for the past month. Getting right into sports, congratulations to Alex Parkinson for winning the five hundred free state championship and to Drew Bultow for being the repeat state champion as a part of the IHSA wheelchair basketball. Our Special Olympics team also did amazing, getting third place at their state tournament. Our spring sports kicked off their seasons with tryouts at the end of February. Good luck to them all as they start their seasons. In music, the month of March is infamously known as Music Month at Niqua, with concerts littered throughout. Our choir kicked off the month with a concert on March sixth. Band and orchestra continued with concerts on March eighth, fourteenth, and the sixteenth. Be sure to check out NVSO. Finish the month out tomorrow, March twenty-first. We also had our annual variety show and multicultural show at the end of February with students showing off their cultures through dance, song, and instruments. Youth in government had their annual Springfield trip this past weekend. Congratulations to Brady C., Emerson Zhang, and Rudy Shen for being elected as Lieutenant Governor, Governor, and Secretary of State respectively for the next school year. On March fifteenth, our juniors took the Illinois Science Assessment, giving freshmen, sophomores, and seniors to take advantage of an extended access period. All three classes were given the chance to come in and spend a period of time with a teacher, asking questions and catching up on missing work. In literary events, our writers performed at the monologue show. Three nights packed with different speeches, skits, and duets. It was a performance no Wildcat would want to miss. Writers Week is this weekend, is this week, Wednesday through Friday, where students and faculty alike perform different messages throughout the school day at both the main building and Burkett Freshman Center. This event has always been memorable at Niqua, with several students sharing personal stories in front of large audiences. I can't wait to see what the Wildcats have prepared this year. In competitive clubs, both BPA and DECA finished their state tournaments over the past month. Congratulations to our several national qualifiers and our new BPA state officers, Serene Bose and Anjuli Boboni. Our speech team made history at the state tournament this year. Congratulations to Aditi Vadika and JV Kroll for placing second in their individual events. Luke Fosdick made Niqua history by becoming the first ever double state champion in extemporaneous speaking and impromptu speaking. Joel Setia also made Niqua proud by becoming one of one hundred and fifty seniors across the nation, selected from over ninety-one thousand students to become a Koch Scholar, winning twenty-one thousand dollars in scholarship money. Congratulations for this huge accomplishment. On April twentieth, Niqua will host its annual Niqua Honor Ceremony, where students are honored for qualities such as leadership, spirit, service, equity, and more. Congratulations to those who have been honored. You truly do deserve it. Many seniors will be honored this week as a part of many senior celebr-, as the first of many senior celebrations. On March twenty-second, seniors will be inducted as a part of the Indian Prairie Scholars. Congratulations to all of your hard work and dedication these past four years. We can't wait to see what the future holds for you all. It's been a pleasure speaking to you all. Thank you for listening, and as always, go Wildcats.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment and sixty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. Tonight, we have four speakers, or six speakers, sorry. The first speaker is Colin Zalowski.
Hello. My name is Colin Zalowski. I am a student, I'm a sixth grade student at Fisher Middle School. Today, I'm here to speak up the harassment and bullying that's happened to me this school year. When I started middle school, I knew that there would be challenges in my new journey, but I didn't expect it to be this bad. The first half of quarter one was perfect. I was meeting new friends and getting used to middle school. But on October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, I was beat up by another student, about three punches to the face and two punches to each of my temples. Once teachers noticed the ring of students, the teacher came and broke up the fight. The teacher asked both, both of us for our opinions and then told Mrs. Sparsour, our assistant principal, what happened. But little did I know, this was only the beginning to me getting bullied and harassed. After that day, bullying and harassment continued and even escalated. Every day, I am called lots of names, such as stupid, fat, a failure to society, and lots of swear words. And it was and still is hard for me today to go class to class without someone saying something in the hallway. In the PE locker room, kids harass me and take my clothes and throw them. And when I told administration about this, they suggested I, I'm the one that leaves. And I've tried to talk to teach, teachers and administration at Fisher Middle School, and they have even acknowledged the fact that there has been multiple things of bullying. But yet, nothing has been done to stop it. It's hard for me to feel safe at school when kids get, sometimes try to put their hands on me and call me names. Now, I have a question for you guys. After telling you all this information, how can you help students like me in situations like this feel safe? Thank you all of you for your time and have a good night.
The next speaker is Christina Garcia.
It's tough to go after that. Good evening. My name is Christina Garcia. I have been a resident of two oh four since two thousand and seven. I have two sons in the district, one at Still and one at Gombert. I come before the board and Dr. Tally to discuss the challenges facing Briarwood and Colony Lake subdivision in regards to getting our middle school students transported safely to the school after boundaries were redrawn and our subdivisions moved from Still to Fisher. Subsequently, we lost our busing services in, in which we lost our busing services to our middle school. On March eleventh, the Chicago Tribune, the headline read, "Eola Roadway Speedway in Aurora: A Hard Problem to Solve", in reference to the stretch of road that has seen fifteen accidents in the past thirteen months, including one fatality. The stretch of road is one of two safe pathways that the middle schoolers from the subdivision in my area are supposed to use to get to Fisher. As a mother and as someone in the community, I can tell you, I live off Middlebury and I have seen people speeding, not stopping at the stop signs, running into fences on Montgomery and Middlebury. Neither of the two pa-, safe pathways that most of the residents in my community that would deem to be safe cross over a major roadway, Montgomery. I believe your job as a board is to provide equality to our community. I'm a parent who's an active member in the community. I have seen all the board members, including Dr. Tally, at events. I would challenge each one of you to come out on a school day in the morning and the afternoon and make the walk across our subdivision with the middle school kids to determine if you can honestly say it's a safe path to cross for them to walk. Let's not wait until there's your tragedy to do something right. Let's do the right thing because we want what's best for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tiffany Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. I think I might have the solution for this young lady, uh, speech. Um, my name is Tiffany Stevens. I am a resident, uh, been here since nineteen ninety-five. Uh, my kids have graduated all four from district two oh four. Uh, I am, uh, in two thousand and eight, I founded a non-for-profit, uh, organization, transportation service, where we transport kids and teens safely on the road. Um, I want to read a letter that I received, uh, from the superintendent, Adrian B. Tally. It has come to our attention that Kids Teen Rider is using the name of Indian Prairie School District two oh four on its websites and in other business-related communications. This practice has raised concerns that Kids Teen Rider clients and other members of the public may, may be misled into thinking that Kids Teen Rider has contracted with district two oh four or is otherwise approved by the district to provide transportation for district two oh four students. As you know, that is not the case. In order to avoid potential misunderstanding among Kids Teen Rider clients and other members of the public, we are requesting that you refrain from referring to Indian Prairie School District two oh four on the Kids Teen Rider website and the promotion material and remove existing references. As an alternative, we would suggest that it would be more appropriate and less misleading to state that Kids Teen Rider Transportation Service for children in Aurora and Naperville. We understand that Kids Teen Rider seeks to offer a helpful service for families in the community. However, we wish to ensure that the basis of this service is clear, that you advance for anticipation and cooperation. If you would like to discuss this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Now, you have flyers of our non-for-profit organization where we have transported over five thousand students all around. And my concern is, this flyer hasn't went out. I actually had to dig this out of the archives. We have not passed this flyer out in over ten years. Uh, back then, we did have, uh, contracts with district two oh four and I had let them know this had been on the website and there's nothing we can do to take it down because this website is no longer in service, but it's in the, uh, algorithm. Uh, I am, um, asking for us to be able to work together. And the reason why I'm concerned with this popping up right now is because I am a candidate for mayor. I'm running for mayor of Naperville. And I find it kind of peculiar that this will pop up. Uh, I was at a meeting to read at Matea and I talked to one of your board members and he made a statement, uh, we, we, we got off real good and then it went from one to ten real quick. He made a statement that he is not going to allow me to destroy district two oh four. And he's been in the scene more than I have.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you very much.
So I want to see if we can work together and get this done. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alicia Smith.
Hello. My name is Alicia Smith. I am a former alumni of Wabonzi and Gregory. I am a former teacher Georgetown and Kendall, and I am a current resident and auntie slash Tia, Gombert. Um, the students that I speak about are my former students. They are also my children's friends and my niece and nephew's friends. Indian Prairie School District two oh four states that they have a commitment to equity and educational excellence. Yet, not all schools are included in this commitment. Four two oh four schools fall below the state average in state testing, Fisher, Georgetown, Longwood, and McCarty. The teachers, students, and families are striving for educational excellence, but the administration and school board are not committed to equity for those schools. When the district designed the boundaries of Gombert, Longwood, and McCarty, it gave them a low-income, free-reduced-lunch population that is more than double the district average of eighteen percent. Georgetown's low-income and free-and-reduced-lunch population is more than triple the district average of eighteen percent. Then, the district created even more inequity by having three of those schools feed into Fisher Middle School. A student attending either Georgetown or McCarty from kindergarten through fifth grade and then Fisher from sixth grade to eighth grade will have attended a school for nine years that has not made the state average in testing. This is in district two oh four. School districts do not have to create inequitable schools that cannot meet the state testing averages. Naperville two oh three, where I'm a teacher currently, has a similar low-income, free-and-reduced-lunch po-, or lunch population to two oh four. Their average is fifteen percent to two oh four's eighteen percent. Unlike two oh four, two oh three does not have a single school with a low-income, free-reduced-lunch average that is more than double the district average, let alone triple. As a result, every single school in Naperville two oh three is well above the state average in state testing. Two oh four's commitment to equity and educational excellence should be for all of its schools. The administration and school board should not be designing schools with inequitable obstacles for teachers, students, and families to overcome. We deserve to be included in the district's educational excellence. We want equitable schools for Fisher, Georgetown, Gombert, Longwood, and McCarty. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Veronica Andrade.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Andrade. Um, I am a former two oh four graduate with Wabonzi, Gregory, McCarty, and Georgetown. I do have three students in the district. They're at Gombert. I've got two first graders and one second grader. I'm coming to you before the board tonight to discuss the inequities that exist in two oh four's boundaries and in their busing. Um, as my sister has already pointed out, it's, doesn't make sense for all of these low-income, free-and-reduced populations to be fed into one middle school. Any person knows, um, that that just is going to breed obstacles and challenges for those students. They've worked so hard from kindergarten to fifth grade and to be put into schools that are not going to help them achieve their excellence with the boundaries, um, and the challenges. Like the previous speaker said, to be bullied at school is, is not going to help him achieve his academic excellence. And I fully believe that part of that is because of how the boundaries have placed those students into those schools. I'm also talking to you tonight about the inequities in the busing situation. It makes no sense why these children have to walk a dangerous path to get to school. If you walk down that path after school, you won't see any kids walking because all of the parents are driving their kids to school. Parents know when something is dangerous for their kids. They know it's not safe for them to walk. So all these parents that are going to have to drive their kids to Fisher, they're taking time out of their lives because they don't want anything to happen to their, to their children. Um, as we've already brought up in news articles with all the accidents that have occurred in the past year. If, if a house is in a dangerous area, but only the dangerous activity happens between the hours of six to midnight, just because it's in the morning when a person walks out their door, is that neighborhood now safe? No, it's not. The same goes for the street. Okay, so whether the street, most accidents happen at night, doesn't mean it's any less dangerous during the daytime. So I really hope that the board can reanalyze and go back and look and walk those streets to see that it, it's not safe for our kids to be walking along those roads. And don't wait for another tragedy to happen to one of our students before you decide to do something or not do something about it. Be a very active leadership and listen to the community and what we've been saying for the past month. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Caitlin DeBolder.
Hi, my name is Caitlin DeBolder. Um, I am a graduate of two oh four. I graduated from Niqua. Um, and now I have two kids in two oh four, one at Gombert and one at Fisher. Um, I'm talking to you today about our busing situation. Um, the accidents that happened on Eola and Autumn Grove Road, there's been fifteen in the last thirteen months. When I emailed Ron Johnson about this, he said if none of those accidents happened at the time that our kids would be walking to school, that road is deemed safe. Um, which doesn't make sense to me and asked, when asked if he looked into when these times of these accidents actually did occur, he said, "At this time, you have been provided sufficient infor-, information on the determination that was made, along with supporting documentation. Unless you have more information for me to consider, I will no longer respond to continuous thoughts or questions relating to this matter." Which seems very unprofessional. And I also want to talk about Fisher Middle School and the problems that they're having with the sixth grade class. There has to be something done. I mean, that poor boy being bullied. My daughter constantly has videos sent to her phone of fights happening over and over and over again, and there's just, something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. And our superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report. Dr. Tally.
Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, I will start off with sad news. Over the weekend, Ms. Karen Kripis, a teacher with eighteen years of service in Indian Prairie, passed away after her battle with cancer. passed away after her battle with cancer. She spent most of her career at Wabonzie Valley High School. She gave it her all, even teaching this first semester of this year. In addition to being a math teacher, she was the chess coach. I want her family to know that she made a difference in the lives of our students and her peers. I ask that we take a moment of silence in memory of her. Thank you. On Saturday, March 3rd, we held our first mental health symposium. Based upon the feedback we heard, parents and the community were very pleased. More than 100 people attended the event. Such an event is not possible, however, without key people helping to create the event. I want to thank Ms. Lisa Berry, Ms. Gina Dyna, Ms. Dawn Faulkner, and Ms. Karen Miller, who were all, who are all, um, Indian Prairie staff for their work in putting this event together. Thanks to Kids Matter, the Naperville Police Department for their presentations, and our sponsors Organic Life, Lifetouch, Edward Elmhurst Health Depays Credit Union, Forimprint, Sky Zone, Naperville Park District, and O'Promo, and Advanced Behavioral Health. Thanks to our community partners for participating in the Resource Fair. Finally, thanks to our presenters who held the breakout sessions. Uh, everything was videotaped and will be available eventually on our, on our, um, website for people to, to, um, see. We know we will do another event next year, and we're already starting to plan. The month of March is Women History Month, this is an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of women in helping to shape our country and our world. Additionally, March is also Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Signed into law by President Reagan in 1987, this month brings awareness about the daily obstacles those with disabilities face in achieving full inclusion. This month also celebrates the accomplishments of those who are differently abled have made in our lives. Schools in their own way have been, have been celebrating these two events. On March 3rd, Valley Runway was held due to funding provided by, um, the, uh, Indian Prairie Education Foundation. More than 40 students were supported in their prom wishes with prom dresses and accessories. I do want to remind parents that there's still time to complete the five essential surveys about their schools. These surveys are very important for each school to gather feedback from their parents. Information from the surveys used by the school is part of their school improvement process. Based upon survey results, goals may be created to address the needs mentioned in the survey. You will have until the end of March to complete the survey. The five essential surveys respond to our strategic plan, Priority Three, Objective One, where we are providing an opportunity to hear from our parents about their schools. And before I turn the meeting back, I would like the Board of Ed to approve the appointment of Dr. Barbie Chisholm as the new Director of Core Curriculum Middle School. She is replacing Ms. Tara Fowler, who will become a principal. Dr. Chisholm is coming to us from U46, where she's currently principal of Garfield Elementary School. Before that, she worked as an assistant principal in Valley View School District for several years. She has, she was also a student support coordinator at a junior high school and taught in the middle school for more than nine years. And then I also want us to, um, support, uh, the approval of Mr. Rodney Jones as the new assistant principal for Matia High School. He is filling the position that Mr. DeBrucker will vacate at the end of the year when he becomes principal. Mr. Jones is coming from Niqua Valley, where he's currently a dean. He has worked as a physical education teacher for a number of years. He works as a youth 360 service coordinator and has worked as a coach of both football and girls' basketball. And I will now turn it to you, Ms. Donahue, both Dr. Chisholm and Mr. Jones are here today.
Okay. I need a motion to approve Barbie Chisholm as the Director of Core Curriculum, uh, Middle School as presented.
Make a motion that the board approve Dr. Barbie Chisholm, uh, as the Director of Core Curriculum for Middle School as presented.
Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
And Ms. Grover?
Yes.
The motion passes, congratulations.
Hello, thank you, it is an honor and I'm very excited to be beginning my new role here in Indian Prairie. Tonight I have with me, uh, I'm proud to bring my family along with me, my two sons, Logan and Kylan, and my husband Brandon are here with me tonight, so.
Congratulations.
And now I need a motion in a second to approve Mr. Rodney Jones as assistant principal at Matia Valley High School.
I'll make a motion, the Board of Education approved Rodney Jones as assistant principal at Matia Valley High School as presented.
Any discussion? Hey, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Yes, congratulations, the motion passes.
Thank you, I'm very excited to start the new role, been in Niqua 20 years, so tough place to leave, a lot of experiences and relationships go with being somewhere 20 years, but very excited to, uh, you know, accept a new challenge. I'm here with my entire family tonight, I got some young adults to come hang out at the board meeting with mom and dad, uh, my wife Heather, my, uh, youngest to oldest, my daughter Tia, she's a freshman at West Aurora, my son Mason, he's a junior at West Aurora, and my oldest Rodney Junior, he's a 21-year-old graduate of West Aurora High School as well, so, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we move to approve our consent agenda items, I need a motion in a second to approve it, consent agenda items E through O.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items E through O as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
And Ms. Jane?
Yes.
The motion passes. All right, so now we're on to our discussion items, we will now have our presentation from.
Nope, nope, got another action item.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I was skipping around here, okay. Um, yeah, one more action item, I need a motion in a second to approve the Jewel settlement as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Jewel settlement as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Say some words, Mr. Carubus?
No.
Okay. Maybe just for the audience sake, um, this is a settlement, uh, related to a lawsuit we entered against the Jewel Corporation for some of the, um, activities they were involved with that, um, impacted our high school students, and, uh, we were happy to get a settlement here, so.
Now I do want, now I do wanna say. Yeah, please do.
Eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars we will be receiving.
Right, and so I think it's important to note that we joined a class action with multiple other school districts across the nation and in Illinois, and we did so, um, at no out-of-pocket cost to us, um, our attorney's fees as part of the settlement, which is pretty standard. And we were required to provide some data on how we were harmed, and, uh, so we were, by pursuing this, we got over eight hundred thousand dollars, which is a tremendous benefit to the district, so kudos to administration, uh, the board, and our attorneys for pursuing this.
All right, so, um, Michelle, I need you to call the roll.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
And Ms. Demming?
Aye.
The motion passes, so, thank you for all the work to get this. All right, now we will have a presentation from Erica Wood, Allison Greenman, and Kisi Robertson regarding the YMCA Safe and Sound Program. Kisia, yeah. Are you gonna share some words first, or after?
Thank you very much for, um, having us. I am a little congested, so my goal is to get through this without, like, coughing too much. Um, thank you, Dr. Tally, for allowing us to come speak, um, and thank you, um, school board members for your time. Um, I am Erica Wood, I'm the Executive Director of the YMCA Safe and Sound Program, um, and this is Kasiah Robertson, um, she is our Behavior Support Manager. And this is Ally Greenman, she is our VP of, um, School Age Care and Camp Programming. I wanna start by saying, um, the Y has been, YMCA Safe and Sound actually, has been in existence for over 40 years, um, providing school age care for kids within Naperville and Aurora. We have been a program that has evolved as kids' needs has evolved. Um, I'm sure you guys all heard the term latchkey child or latchkey kid many moons ago, right? That's not okay anymore. Um, and so now, we've evolved and, um, complex programming around safety, um, curriculum, and how we support children's, uh, children and their families. I will also share that we, um, we look at what we do with three customers. Um, customer number one is our school partners, right? Um, we wanna make sure that we're helping support the needs that you have, um, and ensuring children get to school, that there's quality, um, enrichment. The second customer is parents. Parents wanna know that their children are safe, um, and having a great experience, and of course, our third customer is the children that we work with. And if they're having a great time, it seems to be all as well. I wanna talk about, um, our programming isn't just before and after-school care, our program is year-round, we have summer camp programs, and when school is not in it, um, in session, we also offer programs those days as well. So it is, it's, it's greater than just those, um, times when we're in the buildings. We're also here to make a commitment to help support children and families. Um, I was actually taken, um, with, um, school board member Rising's comment to NEF related to how much support they've provided over the past 35 years last, um, meeting. Um, so I went back, I'm like, wait, I think we have stuff too. Um, so in the past 10 years, we have provided about 1.5 million dollars worth of financial assistance to District 204 children and families. Um, and that's, um, the same trajectory that has been the case since I have started with Safe and Sound, which is about 14 years ago. So, um, again, we're, we're here to invest, we're here to make a commitment, um, to help continue to support families. Um, we also wanna be, um, an organization of inclusion. Um, we have two amazing resources, one is Kasiah, she is their Behavior Support Person, and so when we have children who are complex and, um, may need, uh, some extra support related to emotional regulation, or anything to help them be successful, Kasiah is our person to help come on in and work with us, work with the families, um, observe children, help make that connection so we can help them be successful. The other, um, position that we have is a Director of Inclusion, and that individual, again, is a resource to us that helps, um, families who may need a program modification, something to help their child, um, engage in the program in an accessible, successful manner, and then she helps work with that family, and it helps our staff have the tools necessary to make sure that they are successful. Um, this, our program really has been founded in partnership, um, and, you know, the schools, and we're very proud of that. Um, I wanna highlight a couple of things, one is, um, as I spoke to 1.5 million dollars in financial assistance. In conversations, um, with school leadership, um, the need is greater, you know, we recognize that, and really wanna continue our commitment, and so. Just had a hardship related to medical expenses, it could be a single-parent dad, a single-parent mom, we're committed to providing financial assistance to those families as we have, um, over several, several years. The other piece that we are committed to doing is helping support, um, those children who are on free and reduced lunch, and we wanna look at that in a little bit of a scaffolding. Um, through the state of Illinois, there is a program called the Childcare Assistance Program. Those are funds available to help support families who need childcare. Um, and why, why is it important to access those funds? One is, as you guys know, accessing as many. I apologize. Sorry. You wanna talk about CCAP?
See, you're doing so good. So, um, to kind of follow up what Erica was saying, um, so CCAP is really to support the families, and I think where Erica was going with that is that it just continues to help the families. And, it's so nice, um, that is in daycare, and we are able to work all together to continue to get that family's support. And so, um, again, it's, it's a way to continue, it doesn't just stay with our program, we can help get families qualified, and it stays with that family as they continue through other programs, through school year, if they stay with us through camp, so it's really a great way to, um, support the families, um, fully.
Sorry for that interruption.
No, it's okay, I just wanna make sure I got your point.
Got it. Um, the other part that, um, we're committed to do, if there's a family who does not qualify for CCAP, and there could be families that don't, and they're on free and reduced lunch, we will provide 100% financial assistance to that family in the 22, 23, 24 school year. We know that that's important, and we wanna continue that support. Um, the other level is McKinney-Vento families who we've worked with, um, over the years, um, we wanna provide them with 100% financial assistance as well. As they get engaged with us, we probably will encourage or work with them to do the CCAP program if they have capacity. We know sometimes McKinney-Vento families have a lot going on, and we wanna be sensitive, so. Sensitive to that, um, but our. And three-day, four-day, um, op, uh, accessibility to enrollment, ensuring families are getting what they need in terms of, um, the care that works for their schedule. The other thing I wanna share is that, um, our team is local. You know, we're here, we're in the community, we are boots on the ground, um, our program directors are local, they live in the district, um, our leadership lives in the district. We're here, we wanna be a partner for you guys, um, you know, the Y is an anchor in this community, and we plan on being here for a very long time, and so, again, this isn't just something that we do, it's what we do. A local community approach. Um, we obviously have great community partners, um, we partner with the Park District, the Library, um, Kids Matter, we have, um, business support like Naperville Bank and Trust, Marquette Properties, um, who believe in what we do, um, and invest in the kids that we serve and believe in the mission and are ready to step up, um, as we continue to, um, enhance our ability to engage more kids.
So I'm gonna take it from there and talk a little bit about our research and evaluation around our programs. So we measure and continuously approve our out-of-school-time programary pathways to achieve the outcomes we wanna, um, achieve. Um, the first one is Program Quality Assessment, which is a framework of criteria that supports a high-quality program environment for youth and for our staff. Um, our peer learning communities, which is where we bring groups together, so as Erica mentioned, we have a huge presence in this community, but we're in communities all across Chicagoland, and so how do we bring people together so we can learn from each other, talk, spend time together, so that's a really, um, important part of our association. The third one. Um, and so, um, we have a special accreditation that. Stops to ensure that children are safe in our program. The fourth one is yearly safety checks, um, so our programs are license-exempt through DCFS, which is a status that we hold, um, in addition to any audits or anything that we have with DCFS, Department of Child and Family Services. In addition to any audits or anything that we have with DCFS, Department of Child and Family Services, we do internal audits as well with our risk management team to ensure that we're always up to standard. We're always following those rules to make sure that we're offering the safest programs possible. The fifth one is fall and spring parent surveys. We're constantly working on getting feedback. And not only just asking for feedback, because that's one part of it, right? What do we do with the feedback to make sure that we're putting that into motion and making sure that we're hearing what parents are saying so that we can put it into practice? We have a lot of comments and a lot of information from our last school year, talking about behavior improving, homework completion improving, and classroom participation. So it's great to see that our programs and out-of-school time are impacting the youth in the daytime. So to elaborate a little bit on the parent survey, we use net promoter scores as our base of how we're interpreting the information. And we scored an eight-point-nine out of ten for our surveys, which is a net promoter score of sixty-one. So anything above fifty is considered excellent. And a lot of our open-ended responses, parents talked about compassion, friendliness, children enjoying their time, being engaged in activities, keeping the kids active, talking about homework help, and really recognizing the level of engagement with the staff have with I won't read out the percentages, but again, the parents are really highlighting making friends, expressing selves better, physical activities, being a better listener. And I think the last one I just want to highlight is parents indicated that safety is the most important thing when they're choosing the program. And so we're going to kind of elaborate that on the next slide. So that was talking about the parent surveys. Then on the youth surveys, which we do to make sure, again, you know, what Erica was saying, our third, not third last, but our third customer is the student. And so with the survey of academic youth outcomes, safety rated highest for us. Youth are reported feeling safe in our program, which is so important for youth. We highlight that we are a caring adult, that we're a trusted adult for youth in our program. And so that the children responding to the survey like this is wonderful news for us. We also talked a lot about, or the survey also showed the highlight of relationship with staff. Again, having that caring adult is really important there. So bring it, Erica spoke locally to bring it out a little bit more. You know, the Y is, you know, all over the world. So we have 120 national YMCA's, four regional alliances across the globe. And really, what everyone is doing is making, taking an active role in transforming their community. Collectively, the Y movement reaches 65 million people per year, and we're serving about 11 million people annually. So big picture, we are, you know, have a huge reach. We are across Association. We have the tools to be able to support these programs and to support the structure. So we have a mission advancement team that assists with getting financial aid and grants. We have a marketing team. And as I mentioned a couple of times, our legal and risk team, which help make sure that we're mitigating risk in the program.
And I think, you know, as Ally just pointed out, like, it's a resource of networks, right? So we have this collective goal of serving children and families. And, you know, we can call our partners at YMCA's for additional support or learn from the best of the best. The last thing we want to talk to you about is about advocacy. So our work, you know, happens every day in the school buildings, which is wonderful. But we know families need more. And so advocacy is a big part of what we do. You may have recently heard or read that Safe and Sound recently received a grant from, it wasn't a grant, actually, it was earmarked funds from the federal government through Lauren Underwood. She believes in the work that we do. She believed in the opportunity to impact children and families. And so we received over $600,000 of earmarked funds to help support the work that we do. Built into that is additional financial assistance. Built into that is additional behavior support and families related to social work. Also built into that is working with families and a way to bring them together. So family special events, giving opportunities for children and their parents to play together. Even if it's ten minutes, a half hour, whatever that is, helping foster those really important relationships. And we can be the catalyst to help make that happen. I will also add that it also allows us to engage our additional partners in another level related to curriculum. So the DuPage Children's Museum is one. Inside Out Club at DuPage is another one. An organization called Curiosity to Create. All of those are critical partners for us, and this also allows us to elevate that. Wednesday, our directors are all headed down to Springfield to take over the Capitol. And our goal is to really advocate for children and families and to have legislative priorities highlighted that are really going to benefit them. And so again, our work may seem very hands-on in our buildings or in the buildings, but really, it's bigger than that. And we really want to advocate for children and families as best as we can. I'm going to turn it over to Kasia, and she's going to talk about the next point.
All right. Know a lot about the Second Step Social Emotional Learning Curriculum. So what we have had the great opportunity to do in our programs is get the Second Step Out-of-School-Time program. So we piloted, started in October. We're working in partnership with Excel Labs, who are collecting data. We're doing a lot of deep diving to see how the program is working, where we need to adjust things and all of that. We have weekly implementation of the program that's tracked through consistent check-ins. And we also conduct observations just to see what's actually going on in all of our programs that are implementing this new curriculum. Along with that, as Erica mentioned, we have, we have our local kind of YMCA's in all of our programs here in Chicago and kind of in, you know, in Illinois. But on a global kind of level, we have what we call YUSA. And with YUSA, we have the opportunity to have access to a number of different resources, different trainings, professional developments, et cetera. So as far as like youth and adolescent mental health, just giving a little bit of my background prior to me coming to the YMCA as the Behavior Support Manager. And just to quickly backtrack, I know you all are like Behavior Support Manager. What does she do? So just to tell you a little bit about what I do, I'm accountable for the successful implementation of the behavioral support strategies and the initiatives of the Y. So really looking at our programs, looking at what we actually offer is my first step. Looking at our programs overall, looking at, you know, what type of high-quality activities are we offering? Do we have consistency? Do we have rigor within our programming? And again, all of those words sound very familiar to you. And it sounds very familiar to me coming to the YMCA as a former diverse learning teacher for ten years in the Chicago Public Schools. So this is like my hard work because it means a lot to me for all to with the YUSA and as far as youth mental health are what we call our Mental Health Goal Kids. And one of the things that we have, those Goal Kids are, go into my notes so I don't mess this up. We have a self-care Goal Kid, Build a Resilience, Mental Health Conversations, Being Trauma Informed, Effective Coping Skills, Emotional Regulation, and Suicide Prevention. These Goal Kids are quick and easy way, kind of a grab-and-go resource to assist with knowledge building as well as skills as far as to promote mental health in our, the mental health practices. We have a great opportunity here in our YMCA Association because I am the co-chair for our Mental Health and Innovation Team for YUSA. So again, we are privy to all of the resources, all of the people, and we're able to get access and get assistance as we need it. We also have had the esteemed honor and pleasure of working with YUSA with a grant that was funded by the CDC. And there are twelve YMCA's across America that are doing this cohort. And what we're trying to do, we're actually partnering with different youth-serving organizations within our state to really see what is being done as far as trauma-informed practices and mental health so that we can all work together to really build out the different practices, our different approaches, et cetera, and see how we can be a resource for one another within our own community. So I'm really excited to be working with the partners that we're working with, and I'm excited to see how we can then expand this work once we have completed this cohort. So Freedom Schools?
Yeah. We're done. Yep. Do you guys have questions?
So I'm going to open it up to my board members and also to our students, our Student Advisory Board, if they have any comments or questions about the YMCA presentation or program. So I'm not going to call on individuals, but any questions or comments?
Do you want to say something?
I'm waiting for you. I do.
Yes.
So I guess I'll ask you a similar question. I know you were here last time. Staffing, I believe I heard you say that you would be willing to look at a one- or two- or three- or five-day. So I guess my question to you is, how do you do that? Because I know you tried to, I believe in your presentation, you had, you tried to maintain at least one to, one adult to fifteen students, but hopefully two adults. Staffing is going to be incredibly difficult. It is, especially in today's day and age. Do you have a formula kind of already for that in place? I mean, are you going to be setting up something new where parents can let you know, okay, you know, this week I'm only going to need two days, but, you know, next week I'll need five days, right? So do you have that in place? And how does that go hand-in-hand with your staffing?
So we are customizing it to some extent. We have done that for families on a probably less formal basis. You know, we have, you know, nurses and firefighters and stuff like that whose schedules is very different. Our plan is, which we are building out, and we are committed to doing that for next school year. So that will be an option for families. The plan is that a family would choose their day on, for the month, right? So they would choose like Monday or Tuesday, or Mondays and Wednesdays, you know? And then if there was the need to adjust, we would work with that family in the best way we could to accommodate them. You're absolutely right. Staffing is a challenge, is a challenge everywhere. And we do work to have a one-to-fifteen, one-to-fifteen ratio. And we are, we are committed, as Ally talked about, our Presidium accreditation is to having two staff present. That is just something that is in our practice. So, you know, if we're down to four kids in the afternoon, everyone's picked up, those two staffs still stay. And that's to protect the staff. It's also very much there to protect the kids. And so, yeah, staffing, I'm not going to paint that like it's this really simple thing. But right now, we're working very diligently to continue to support adding more staff to what we do and so that we can maintain the safety practices that we have and the ratios.
Okay. And then regarding the behavioral support stuff, excited to hear that, you know, you're kind of bringing in some of that Second Step, that social-emotional learning framework. I'm assuming that, you know, talks about skills for learning, emotional management, problem-solving, goal-setting, all that type of stuff. My question regarding the behavioral support is that, is that kind of some initial base training you give to some of those adults? Or do you have a separate team that kind of you're in charge of where, you know, I guess if things are escalated, you know, I'm assuming you bring in a social worker or let the school know or something like that. But are those other, kind of those core skills that you're giving to some of your staff members? Or is that what your thought process is?
Absolutely. So just to speak a little bit about kind of how we have framed it out. One thing I'm very big on, again, former school teacher, so a lot of training, a lot of PD. One of the things that I've done is partnered with Hart Grove Behavioral Health as well as Garfield Park Behavioral Health. And they have been providing mental health training for our staff. So really making sure our staff are aware of what's going on. Make sure they are aware of the changes that are happening. We've talked about mental health trends, assisting children through COVID, suicide prevention. So really, the topics that are coming up a lot, I really try to go out and get additional training for our staff. I also conduct training myself based on the various needs of the sites. One thing we definitely do for all of our youth that are struggling within programming, I try to partner with the school. So I get the consent from the parent, and my first conversation is with the school staff to see how we can work together. So I work a lot with the social worker. I work a lot with counselors in the school building. I work a lot with, you know, homeroom teachers, diverse learning teachers. Because again, if they already have supports and strategies in place, we want to emulate those within our program. So I don't believe in starting over. If they already have a point system, then we mimic that point system. And we work very closely with the school to make sure it's working if we need to adjust. And we try to check in regularly with the school just to see like if anything has changed, especially if they are kind of on the inclusion side where they have a diagnosed disability. We really check in, you know, if there has been an additional IEP meeting and there are other supports that we need to add, if we're able to add those, we absolutely do that.
And please don't misunderstand, I'm not expecting these high expectations for you because for Safe and Sound, all I want them to do is behave well and treat others with respect. I mean, that's basically what it comes down to, right? So, but I'm happy to hear that you are willing to partner with the schools in whatever program or, you know, individualized educational programming that they may already have with a particular student. So, thank you.
And we currently do that, right? And so, you know, we're in our, in the buildings and, you know, we get our finger on the pulse pretty quickly about what's happening. And that's where, you know, we reach out to Kasia to help kind of bridge that gap, right? Because she is our subject matter expert in that world. And so she just really helps connect all the dots for us.
Thanks.
Dr. Tally, can I ask a question? So I used to have my kids in the Safe and Sound Program. That was a long time ago, and times have changed. So for parents who want to put their kids now, what does the curriculum look like? Do they get homework help? Do they have playtime? Can you go through what it would be like after school?
Sure. So what happens typically is a child comes into the program and we have what we would call Choice Time. Kids need time to decompress, right? They've had a busy day. And so there's a whole host of like activities out that kids can participate in based on their interests. Some children like to start their homework right away. Some just need to like play with the Legos. Some just want to talk, right? Like and just process what their day is like. Then the next thing we would run into is snack. And we currently use the lunch provider for the school district. So they help provide all the snacks to our kids. And then we would run into like a physical activity time, right? When it's nice out, we think kids need fresh air. We'll go outside, we'll play games on the playground. It could also be, you know, ten minutes of like decompressing, right? And then we will come back in. We do have homework time, homework support. It has been interesting with Chromebooks, right? It's, it has changed the canvas a little bit in terms of what probably your children did with their paper homework and stuff. And then we also have enrichment activities, enhance the curriculum stuff. And so we have a program called CATCH, which is the childhood approach to children's health. We do literacy, we'll do arts and crafts. We have science, STEAM, that's where we partner with the DuPage Children's Museum. We also do things around destination imagination, which speaks to like problem-solving, conflict resolution. You know, how do I integrate with my peers? And then Fridays, we always say are fun Fridays. And kids have special events or parties or painting, sipping and painting parties. They've done all kinds of things. So Fridays are definitely our fun Fridays.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On Slide Five, you had the opportunity to share some impressive information on classroom participation and behavior and homework completion. And I just wondered how, how were you able to garner that information, that feedback from regarding those numbers? Who did you hear from to share that?
Sure.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, we have a research and evaluation team that will partner with schools when they're willing to share information. And they partner with teachers and school administrators to get feedback around school participation. Was there anything more, Erica?
No, I think we, oh, I'm sorry. We do have, through our research and evaluation team, when we survey the parents, you know, we encourage them and we get a lot of our feedback from them and how, and how we're doing and the needs that they're looking for.
And then just, I wondered, really impressive on the, you know, amount of dollars that are coming. And is that, are those resources strictly being able to be used in 204? Are those spread in other?
No, that 1.5 million dollars is specifically District 204.
And just for Safe and Sound?
Just Safe and Sound.
Okay.
So everything we do within the school district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Krubes, did you?
So oftentimes I act as kind of a perspective historian.
So oftentimes I act as kind of a perspective historian, but I also have kind of a personal bias, like some people need to disclose as well. But my wife was a local board member and I learned how to swim at the Y downtown. And my three kids went through the Safe and Sound for 11 years. We did the summer camp and camping, so I'm, I'm very familiar with the program as personally on a family level. But it, it is very, you alluded to the partnership. The history between the Y and the school district runs long and deep. And when Tom Myers was on the board.
Eric is on the map.
It's right over there. When Tom Myers was on the, the, the Y board, now he's at Naperville Bank and Trust. The Frye Family Y is named Frye Family Y because of the Frye family in the area and that's also why one of our schools is named for that. And one of our former teachers was a Frye as well. And then, you know, Mayor Prado was very involved with the Y from officer friendly days from way back when. So the partnership, I think, between the district and the Y has run long and deep. You guys have helped us out in a lot of tough situations that you didn't mention as well. You know, snow days, when some, something happens and we needed to, you know, to have, have to deal with childcare. So we would close for, you know, for a snow day and now our working parents need somewhere to have their kids. And so some of that flexibility has been great over the years. And, you know, sometimes, you know, I've been on the board for 10 years on the school board and I, it took me a while to get used to some of the flow of when we hear our budget presentations. And it's interesting that I've, you know, never heard a presentation from the Y over the years. And so it makes me think about, you know, initially I was like frustrated, like why haven't I heard? But, you know, part of it is because from my perspective, I already knew. So I'm kind of glad that you're coming and presenting so that the whole community can, can understand the value of the services that you are providing. It, it, you know, on a side note, it kind of makes me wonder what other services were I'm not hearing from, but we are a large district. So even though I have been here for a while, there's still places that I learn about constantly. So we did hear about, from a new service provider recently and that kind of put me taken back, you know, why, why do we need it? Safe and Sound has worked, it worked for me. But I do acknowledge that there was some limitations. You guys weren't everywhere, not in all of our buildings. So there were some challenges with that. And then we did have some discussions around a waitlist. So could you talk to those two points with not being in all of our buildings and waitlists?
Sure. So my favorite. Was the heat day. So yeah, in terms of waitlist, yeah, I'm going to be honest, we, we do at the beginning of school year have waitlists. And our goal ultimately is to engage every child in before and after school care as efficiently as we can. As, you know, Ellie talked about is, you know, focus for us really is safety first, right? And we want to make sure that the children that we enroll in our program, we can safely care for, right? Hence Safe and Sound. And, but we work very diligently to as kid, add children as we can add staff. And again, I think at the last board meeting, you know, staffing is a challenge, right? Everywhere. And so we do look for opportunity to continue to add staff. And so we don't want kids on the waitlist, we want to get them off as quickly as possible because we're here to serve, right? And, and that's what we want to do. Your second question around, related to schools, you know, when I came to Safe and Sound, there was schools with lower enrollment. And so at one school, there could be four kids, right? Or six kids. And, you know, one, two kids drop out, one, that's not a robust experience for those children. Two, it really is a dilution of resources, right? So how do we maximize our opportunity to best serve those children? And so, in working with the former administration, you know, allowing those schools to be transported to the local, local school, here it goes, the local school became an effective way to serve families as best as we can. Biltah has been one of those outliers where we just haven't been able to get enough traction in getting enough kids. But I will also say, you know, in having conversations with the district, if you said, you know what, we really got to get a program onsite at this, this particular school or these schools, then we want to respond that way, right? But, you know, the conversation is, has been around us being able to serve the kids who need care, who have asked for care. But if there's a growing need someplace else, then let's have that conversation. We're here to serve, right? It's not about an exclusion thing, it's just more around maximizing resources and being able to do a response to the needs that are coming across.
And can I also add one thing just around staffing? I know Safe and Sound does a great job of really partnering with schools, so seeking out support staff. They may want additional hours after school or even going to the high schools and having them pick up additional hours. So really kind of homegrown staff that we're trying to reach out to. Again, they know the student population best, they can help us with the supports and services that the students need because they're with them for majority of the day. So they do a really great job of reaching out to the school as well as the high schools around in the area.
One of the conversations I had with Doug not too long ago, probably the end of last school district, the last school year, was around how do we engage your future educators program at the high schools, right? And how do we become that catalyst for them to work for us? So they're getting that experience of deciding whether they want to be an educator or not. We can be that, right? We can be the pipeline for those opportunities and it's a win-win. And many of those kids, similar to yours, are young adults, have been in the Safe and Sound program, right? And, and have those experiences and so it's relatable. And honestly, they're much cooler than I am. And, and the kids love them, right? And, and they connect really well. So there is those kind of opportunities as well as with the National Honor Societies in the schools. You know, having them come in and tutor or work with a child or student who's having, who is struggling, right? And that's not necessarily an everyday staffing situation, but that's a, someone that can really be a great role model for a student that's struggling in an area. So there is also those opportunities as well.
Two, two final points. One is the, you know, one is kind of the over promise, prov, promise that I, you sometimes get in society where, you know, somebody takes your dinner reservation and it's going to be a 15 minute wait. No, it's going to be a 30 minute wait. No, it's going to, you're going to sit down at seven. And so I like the idea of somebody being able to make a promise and keep it. And so sometimes there's reasons for waitlists because you know you can't deliver. You know, nowadays you go to a restaurant and they have empty tables and you get frustrated because you can't seat, but they don't have the staff for them. And so you, you get an appreciation for that. The second thing, I'm not exactly sure where all this is going, but my second concern is if staffing is such a concern for us and, and you and, and all of us, are we creating a situation where now we are having competing staff and we're going to actually lower the level of service across the district? So I would like, you know, an administration type of response on that. Are we diluting our services by expanding it further where people are going to be competing for staff, including our own, where we're not going to end up providing good service throughout?
I think your concern is noted. And I was, what I was going to say, and I'll delay my response to you to say what I was going to say about the Y program. Erica has been tremendous in the time I've been here. I appreciate how the Y has responded to issues. I will say this, there are times when, and she has said this as well, she and Laura Rosenblum, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary School, they have each other probably on speed dial and sometimes, and they talk to each other in the morning. And, and the principals have spoken to how flexible they are and very professional they are. I say all of that to get back to your question, though. Both the Y and the Right at School program are going to want to have stellar programs. They're not going to want to disappoint. So could there be a dilution? There could be, but I don't necessarily think that that will occur. From both organizations, they have spoken to their ability and their experience in finding the staff. And so I believe in believing them until proven otherwise.
All right. Any other board questions or anything from the students? So I think it, you've been a, a great partner for the district for a very long time and it's, your contributions to our students are important. We recognize the value of having a quality program for our students before and after school and it's refreshing to actually have two presentations, two meetings in a row with quality information that will help our district. So thank you very much. And I believe, Dr. Teller, you'll have some comments and information about plans.
So one last, Erica, am I able to congratulate you?
Oh, sure.
Well, Erica has received, I, I think it's a promotion, I would call it that, where she will be in charge of the Frye Center. And I'm, hopefully I'm saying that correctly. So I want to congratulate you on that. It's well deserved and, and she, as she said to me on the phone the other day, she's staying in the community, she's staying engaged, staying involved. So I think that's a really great thing that's happening. And so, yes, we will have two programs next year. I have a slide for it, there's up on the screen. It will show where the YMCA will, will be staying at many of its schools it's been at before. You'll see White Eagle and Peterson has an asterisk, that's because those schools, the kids leave their buildings and go to another school because of the number of children, as was mentioned. And then we will have the Right at School program at nine schools. Information will be going out to families tomorrow evening. And, and then there will be information regarding virtual meetings so parents can learn about the Right at School program. Program will be communicating with some of its parents. About the switch over happening and that's going out tomorrow as well on the 21st, if I recall correctly. So that is what will be happening as we go forward with having these programs next year in our schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. And my thanks is with me.
Erica, I feel better, I'm sorry.
We were having some sympathetic coughing up here. It's like, I noticed it was moving down the board. All right, our next item is a discussion item by our student advisory board with Eric Perkash and Shloka Sarkar. Welcome.
All right, good evening. I'm Shloka Sarkar, I'm from Matia Valley High School and.
My name is Eric Perkash, I'm from Wobonzi Valley High School, I'm a junior currently. We're here with the rest of the SAB Student Advisory Board. If you guys could just stand up and introduce yourselves.
Hello, I'm Dr. Professor Ari, student of Valley.
Hi, I'm Professor Taylor, student of Wobonzi Valley.
We're currently missing Taylor, the other NICA representative due to some other circumstances, but I mean, Shloka will be presenting our 2023, 2024 Student Board Advisory Proposal. So just a quick overview of what we'll be going over in the presentation, we'll be talking about the current SAB, what we've accomplished so far and some initial proposals and initial objectives that we had for the school year. We're talking, we'll be talking about a potential student committee, committee for next year's SAB and executive officers. We'll also be, be talking about application processes, a meeting structure and a tentative timeline. So these are some notes for the current SAB and what we've been doing. The structure, at least we're, I'm pretty sure everybody here can see, but it's six student representatives, two from each high school. We have one junior, one senior respectively, and Dr. Howard serves as our main contact for administration, the Board of Education, and also just terms of district policy and actions. So here's some progress and some objectives that we had for the beginning of this school year and what we've accomplished so far. These proposed objectives were recycling in District 204, apologies for the typo, creation of language barrier inclusive material, and this will be centered around parents for college-related information, especially for parents that don't have English as their first language and children who don't have English as their first language as well. As a junior, it's difficult to navigate around those sort of things even with the resources and connections that, you know, my parents and I have, friends, family, all that stuff. So it must be, so it's extremely difficult for people who are new to the country, new to the district as well, to find access to that information. So allowing to preach that language barrier would be extremely helpful for students and their parents. And another proposal was a student teacher feedback system because this would be through the direct, forms that would be sent directly to a teacher or the head of their respective department. And the reason we had thought about this was because there were many students within all the high schools that had felt that their voices weren't being heard enough and that their reasons for going to the classrooms or some problems they have with the classrooms weren't being heard by the teachers. And this. After new paper recycling bills, bins, that's going to be our current step within the system and there's more to follow. And further information on the recycling policy was also given to us and it will most likely be implemented either beginning of the next school year or the mid or the middle of next school year. There was also creation of language barrier inclusive material that we had thought of, but that is currently on, on hold due to lack of information and other circumstances. And the student teacher feedback system is also on hold. Here is our proposal for the student committee that will hopefully take place next year. And the organization will be the formation of a new student committee around five to six students and the elections, at least for these students to be put into the student committee, there were, there would be elections from the student body, there'd be people running campaigns and similar aspects, but it was currently. Lack of interest from the student body and also lack of publicity from the student body given how this is relatively new, so we can't hold elections on a broader scale until it's actually spread to a point where people actually know what it is and what we're doing. And the grade levels would be from 10 to 12, so sophomore students and seniors. Because right now it's two people, students, one junior, one senior from each high school. Instead, this would be two sophomores, two juniors and two seniors from each respective high school forming a student committee within that high school. And the sophomore and the grad, and the terms would be sophomore representatives serve until graduation. And there is a potential system for post-removal based on circumstances like the participation and other controversies that may occur. And the responsibilities for student committee will be electing one student executive for, from the committee to serve one year, and details on this are on the next slide. And representing those voices to that aforementioned student executive. And they would be the liaison for clubs or individual teachers or students and et cetera. And they also take charge in organizations of events regarding their responsibilities. That could be rallies, assemblies, presentations, posters, any of the sort, anything of the sort. So now we're going to move on to the student executive system. And the role of the student executives will be to represent the student body in district actions. And this differs from the present SAB to the greater ability to represent also the consolidated factor of having one person, one delegate from each specific high. And actually represent the student voices. And actually represent the student voices. May occur within the student body regarding district action. And grievances would be made note of from the aforementioned student committee. And this would also be to help det... Society, this would be accomplished through the cyclical executive system. And given how each executive would only be able to serve one year, this would be able to introduce fresh ideas constantly from incoming students and also students that have been in the district for a long time and know the flaws, know the things that could be improved upon as well. The formation would be three students, one from each respective high school. The grade level will be a junior or senior, which differs from the student committee, given how student committees can have juniors, sorry, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. However, the student executives will be voted on by the student committee instead of the student body. Finally, here are the responsibilities of the student executives. They'll serve as honorary Board of Education member. And the elections would be held by a student committee as opposed to the parent population. And the above is future planning, given how the student committee hasn't been formed yet. But once it does, those elections will take place. As it stands right now, current SAB members will be serving as student executives. They will have a symbolic vote on decisions during board meetings and interact with other board members. And the requirements for this would be, they must have an in-depth knowledge of board topics and actions. And there will be a system in place for removal from position if inadequacies displayed consistently or other complaints arise. They must attend consist, attend consistently and constantly display above-average role to, commitment to the role, given how a lot of problems with the SAB this year was that there was, there are major conflicts with schedule and other factors. So, for a, for a student to serve as a student executive, they must be able to actually attend the meetings. They must be able to actually show their dedication and be able to actually serve the community and the student body as their role indicates. And once again, there would be a system for, for removal from the position if not, if this is not displayed. And exceptions would exist for student responsibilities such as after-school activities that may arise that take place over the, you know, for example, Dec Internationals or PPA Internationals, and also other student responsibilities. And they'd also represent the student body equitably and without personal bias. Once again, removal of position and other consequences if the position is used inappropriately. We need, we want this position to be as fair and equitable to the entire student body and also show that the student voice is being represented fairly. We do not want any advantages being taken of this position, given the role and, and basically power that they would have within the district to represent the student body.
Okay, we're going to get into application process. I don't know why it says meeting structure, but it's the application process. So, we basically think that the application process will be split into four key aspects, which would be teacher recommendations, invitations to apply, the online application, as well as individual interviews. Let's start by discussing teacher recommendations. Now, essentially, we're foregoing the entire process of having students bring us teacher, teacher recommendations and instead deferring to a process of having teachers recommend us students, who we will then get into contact with and ask them about their interest in the Student Advisory Board. And we do have programs at different schools within the district that employ such recruitment methods, such as Principal Advisory Board at Matia, and then... Yeah, so, we would create an email that requests students to recommend a few stu, to... We would create an email that would request teachers to recommend a few students for the Student Advisory Board. So, through this, we would get in contact with our principals. Thank you, Mr. DeBucker, for attending this meeting right now. And then, ask them to forward the email to each school's English department. We've currently cited English departments because they usually have the most outreach with the most amount of students, as opposed to maybe history or like science courses, which students elect to skip or take in the summer. The kind of students the SAB is looking... Some, how well someone can advocate for people that they care about. And there are always factors that go into the grades that people are currently attaining. District isn't just composed of people who are perfect students. They're composed of people who are great people. And so, that would be something that we would really emphasize in that email. Also, diverse perspectives and opinions would be another thing that would be emphasized. The form would require information on the student, like their name and ID number, just so we can get into contact with them properly and make sure we're emailing the right person, because we've all had that moment where we email someone with the exact same first name and exact same last name. And then, we would just want them to give maybe two to three sentences. Why do you think this student is a good fit? What... Have you seen them display in class? The really... Those are the biggest things for the student committee. Student application, we have an online application. We've created some, some basic... Things that you believe you could help introduce as... And the Student Advisory Board would create a list of questions to be authorized by Dr. Howard. Obviously, we want to make sure we're asking like appropriate questions and not just like, who do we like the most? And then, this is subject to change, but we think it would be the best for seniors to really have the... Thinking, those, they're competing for our last spot, but we don't know who to go with. Sometimes juniors can be like, well, who am I going to work with next year? So, seniors would be less likely to have that kind of bias or influence. Now, we're going to go over meeting structure. At the moment, the way that we conduct meetings is that Dr. Howard graciously reserves us a room here before the board meetings, and we come here to meet. And while that's amazing, and we really appreciate all of your hard work, we think it might be a little bit better of an idea to meet in off weeks, so we can really present information and get a stronger grip and understanding of the things that we're talking about before we come to you. Because sometimes when we have these discussions, there's a lot of self-editing that happens as we're talking. So, if we could get that done the week before, that would be great. And then, so, this is again split into like four central parts of the meeting. One would be the review. Essentially, we would collect attendance, because again, we do want to make sure that members of the student committee and members of the Student Advisory Board are attending the meetings and they're involved. And just because you have a position doesn't mean that we want you to like be lazy and stuff like that, because that can sometimes happen. If you're like guaranteed something until graduation, you kind of go, oh, well, senior years doesn't really matter. But we want to make sure that people are staying committed throughout. And then, different committees will present on their tasks assigned from previous weeks. I'll get into the tasks a little bit later. Then, we would have our executive officers create presentations on things that happen at the board meetings. And again, this is really why it's so important to have executive officers. It can be difficult to understand what happens at the board meetings, even though they're obviously the social event of every single month. But, going through the agenda and all the things that are going on, what is relevant to the Student Advisory Board? What are things we can make actionable change on? So, having those leaders really look into that and then like disseminate that information towards the student committees. I think it would also be helpful if the officers created questions to lead discussions. And then, the discussion would go to the committee. Which would include time for questions for the executive officers and time to work on other members on specific topics. As Eric mentioned before, we have our own little projects like recycling and the language. So, it's time to work on those. Think about, who are we contacting? What emails do we have to send right now? Things like that. And then, to wrap up the meeting, just a quick summary of what happened and then create tasks for upcoming weeks. Now, I've used the word tasks a couple of times, so what are tasks? Task would be proposals for focusing change, ways to get student input, presentations for future meetings, et cetera. Essentially, it's just time to like do things for the Student Advisory Board during meetings, because we all have hectic, crazy lives. And just understanding, hey, what are my responsibilities for this week that specifically have to do with the Student Advisory Board? Okay, we have a tentative timeline. It may change a little bit just because of the way that we were able to get this out due to our own lives and those things getting in the way. So, obviously, right now, we're going to be discussing with principals in the upcoming week about this idea, assuming you guys are okay with it. And then, beginning in April, online applications would be two. Through mid-April, we would try to conduct interviews with potential student committee candidates. And at the end of April, results would be released. And then, Eric also mentioned this in the beginning, but we think it would be the best for the next year for the current juniors to be our executive officers, because we think we're really great, but also because we kind of understand what's going on in the Student Advisory Board. And it would be helpful to set a strong precedent for then future Student Advisory Boards to go off of in the future.
And also, one thing when it came to the March timeline event, let's send emails to teachers that will most likely take place after spring break. The talk to principals will still be occurring, hopefully during the month of March.
And that's it, so, if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. I will, I ask Mr. Rising, do you have questions?
So, first, oh, so first of all, thanks. Great job. Let me first give a couple compliments. Thank you to my fellow board members and to the students. You know, I know this has been a long process. I think we've been at this going on two and a half years. So, I appreciate the students being patient with us. I know this first started with Mrs. Fier and Mr. Womack at Wobonzi. And you're kind of getting a example of things don't necessarily always move extremely quick, but we want to make sure that we're getting them right. You know, I, I think I speak for myself, but the board is, the student voice is extremely, extremely important to us. I just attended the Matia Wobonzi Candidate Forum last week. And, you know, I, I was proud to say that we are trying to get as much student feedback and have that be part of our decision-making process as we make decisions here and for the district. So, thank you to the students and thank you to the board. The recycling program, how, how is that going? I know, I know I got asked that quite a few times at the candidate forum about the recycling program. Are, do you guys feel we're on the right track? It sounds like we're looking at vendors now. Are you coming, kind of coming up with a plan and working with Dr. Howard? How's that going so far?
So, when it comes to the recycling proposal itself, we have, as I said before, we met with the current contractors for waste and management and just disposal. And we are currently looking at recycling specifically within student classrooms, because as it stands right now, there's a lot of recycling that goes on in the district regardless. Carburet, I know, is an extremely large portion of our recycling. But when it comes to student recycling bins, it's not a very big thing that occurs because of the fact that a lot of students will just throw away like banana peels or gum within a recycling bin, because it's the biggest bin there. So, instead of starting a sudden change, we would be like, oh, yeah, we remove all trash cans or like starting something drastic. We want to do a step-by-step process that'll be taking place over multiple, multiple years, hopefully carried out by the future board, Student Advisory Boards and student committees, executives, whatever it will be called next year. So, right now, our first step of the plan is to introduce paper-only recycling bins, specifically ones that are slotted to only allow paper within the, you know, the bin itself so that, and also start awareness campaigns within each respective school by, you know, the Environmental Society, by key club, whichever club within the school is willing to help. And I know for Wobonzi, me and Kristen have already talked to multiple people within the, the Executive Board of the Environmental Club. And they are the ones who actually brought us this proposal to begin with. They're the ones who showed the most interest and have been very active in helping us. So, there is student interest and there is massive amounts of student involvement. All we are waiting on right now is to finally draft up the proposal to, I mean, we've already presented a proposal, but get the final word out from the contractors. And they have agreed to provide us with the bins. We just need to get all the details finalized and planned together in a concrete and just conducive way.
Okay, and then, could you go back to the previous slide? So, I love this idea about tasks. Ideally, I would love to see, you know, the future boards kind of come up with a list of things and, okay, let's prioritize these, you know, and, and work with Dr. Howard or even the board president or superintendent or, you know, to kind of look at, okay, what are the realities of looking at whatever these tasks are, right? Like, okay, how long would it take? As you're seeing, you can't just snap your fingers and recycling's in place, right? There's a process and a timeline, and people need to get involved. And, and there's resources that need to be pulled together. So, I love this idea. I, I hope you guys even work this out even further, because, you know, I'll compliment Victoria. A couple of times that Victoria has asked the board questions during the meeting, extremely insightful. So, not only is your voice important, but your ideas are important too. And that's why I'd love to see these, those ideas kind of get prioritized and then kind of brought to the district and, and we can take a look at those things, absolutely. So, thank you.
Ms. Dumbing.
Just a quick, just a couple of quick comments. I so appreciate all the work that all of you have done. And ditto on Board Member Rising's, you know, comment on how valuable we feel that your voice is, how important it is. And thank you, Assistant Superintendent Howard for, Dr. Howard, for assisting with, with the students and seeing their, how you guys have already grown. Just, I love, as you looked at what was important, well, two questions, or one question. When we talked about having the students have the teacher recommendations, is, is that the, for someone to be considered, do they have to have a teacher recommendation? I saw the online application, so is that the whole process? Or can someone self-nominate themselves as well? I just wonder.
Yes, so, in regards to the teacher recommendation, for the next year, we would be looking for you to have been recommended by a teacher before. Just because a lot of these proposals and a lot of these committees often require teachers to like write out an entire thing and send it in. And then, the teachers somewhere along the line are like, well, why am I even doing this right now? So, just kind of cutting that process down and just being like, okay, so obviously, this teacher recognizes you and we understand and value the merit of that, and then taking that forward. And then, obviously, just to clarify, student executive officers would not need a teacher recommendation, because you're in the committee, so that means you already got one in the first place, somewhere along the line. Something we would also like to mention is that we did mention earlier that executive officers should have around a year of experience. However, if we do feel like one candidate just makes a really exceptional interview and they just seem to be someone who is great, maybe they were new to the district, junior year, so they just didn't know what was going on or something like that, we would still obviously take that into consideration and figure out how we could place them into the executive officer role.
Yeah, and the elections for the executive officer role itself is determined, is based on the student committee. And the reason that differs from how the student committee elections go on is because though everybody within the student committee would already have been elected by the student body. So, for the, they now represent the student body, each of the people within the student committee. So, now, those people would elect one of the already existing student committee members, like Shloka had already said, to become the student executive for that school year.
Additionally, student executive officers are also where we're starting to look at, hey, maybe we take into consideration your GPA, just because it is a time commitment, coming to board meetings, going to student advisory board meetings. And not that GPA necessarily determines how person like is as, and their ability to advocate, but the time you are able to spend. If you are maybe not doing so well in some of your classes, it might be a better idea for you to spend more time with your studies. So, like, that would be the reason that we look at that. I just want to make sure everyone's doing well in school before they think about this.
Well, it's interesting that you kind of came back to that, because I did, I really valued the thought process as you talked about having, talking about the character of students and, and finding ways that someone might be able to have leadership outside of, you know, the academic side of the house, but some, you know, personnel who would be committed and who you guys would, would feel would really be committed. So, I like kind of both sides and different areas. So, so, those are the only comments that I had, just wonderful job. And thank you so much for putting all the time in. And I, I do think, I do, I think you've seen just even from the recycling process that, that it takes a bit. And so, I love your timeline. It's, it's very aggressive, so, so be patient with us.
Ms. Fazdek.
Great presentation. Thank you for all this information and this careful planning. I do have a couple small questions, just for clarification, for the student committees. Will they meet collectively, all 15 or 18... Will they meet collectively all fifteen or eighteen students across the district level? Or will those remain primarily high school-based committees?
So, when it comes to the meeting of the student committees themselves, we want to initially make it so that the student committees will meet with their high schools, just, you know, get together and make sure that their own high school voices are represented because it's, there are vastly different sort of circumstances for each of the high schools, for the student body. There's vastly different ethnic groups, minorities, whether that, whatever that may be. We want to make sure that that is discussed first and there would be place for meetings with the entire, all three student committees all convening together and actually, you know, discussing with the rest of the student committees from each of the respective high schools and their respective student executives to make sure that they're all in consensus or there, if there are any disagreements or misunderstandings about things that have been going on in each high school, whether that be controversies or anything of the sort. So, it will be split into the committees meeting together from their respective high schools and, and all of the committees meeting together just to discuss district-wide things.
Okay, thank you. Another point of clarification that I didn't happen to see here. Are you interested in any of those meetings and having board members attend, one or two at a time?
That would be kind of case by case, like, according to our own like meeting agendas and stuff like that. Just because sometimes meetings may be garnered towards work and really like trying to make slideshows and presentations and emailing concerned people, so you don't necessarily need to be there because I'm not sure how fun that would be for you. And then sometimes if we're like, hey, maybe we're ready to present, we would always, obviously love to have the student committee also there. So then that would maybe be a meeting where we have here, kind of like this right now. So it would be case by case, as well as if we're working with a specific board member on getting outreach or something like that with a certain issue, we would love to have you involved in the ways that you can. So we would just discuss and figure out times for that as well.
Okay, great. My only other suggestion that I have for you, for something for the students to consider, because I noticed that when you're sophomores, if you're on the student committee, you're making essentially a three-year commitment. If you're a junior, you're making a two-year commitment. Am I understanding that correctly?
There is one thing when it comes to student committee, when it's sophomore, junior, senior, when you get elected as a junior, then you stay on until graduation. However, if you get elected as a sophomore, we there, we were, there is possibility for you having to run again because of the fact that serving for three years as a sophomore would give, would not allow a lot of place for people to, who, for new ideas to get into, you know, the flow. And that's what we want this to be for the new students to get their ideas out there. So, if you get elected as a sophomore, then you would have to run again. But given how you already elected the first year, there, while it might not be confirmed, you would already have that experience. But if you're elected as a junior, you serve until graduation. That's what the system in place is currently. For executive officers, once you get elected, you only serve one year regardless of whether you are a junior or a senior.
Additionally, sophomores are ambitious people, but they're also at that cusp in high school where their plans change and what they want to do after high school changes. And so, they might feel, maybe this wasn't for me, maybe I'm not the best fit for this and maybe this isn't the best fit for my schedule. And so, we're giving them that time to be like, okay, let me like remove myself from that situation. Whereas juniors and seniors are, tend to be a little bit more like committed and like they're like, this is probably what I'm going to be interested and capable of doing for the next couple of years.
I think, it sounds like you guys have thought through that part, which is great because you're right, it is a long, a long-term potentially commitment. And being able to have the opportunity to have both a recommitment by the student and almost a recertification by your advisor, by collectively student committee, that yes, this person upheld their responsibilities and yes, I'm willing to do those for another year, might be an important piece, but I'm glad to see that you guys have already considered a lot of that. I'm really impressed by what you have here. I'm really excited about hearing more from students. And it sounds like you found a way, hopefully to consider this, a more workable way to break down the enormous task you had in front of you this year, especially as the inaugural Student Advisory Board. And perhaps have it be a little bit more hands-on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jane.
Thank you, Shloka and Eric. So, I need a little bit more clarification. I'm having some confusion between student committees, student reps, and student executives. Can you give me a brief explanation of the differences between these schools?
Student reps and student committees are like kind of the same thing, like when you're in the student committee, you are a student rep. And so, again, these are people that we're looking at regardless of academic standing. We're looking at them being good people and people who are reflective of not only their, their school's goals and things like that, but also the district's goals and expecting excellence, especially like in characteristics that they're able to show and leadership. And then our student executive officers will be elected by these people who we believe would be the best representatives of each high school. And also maybe the people who are best suited to understanding what's going on in board meetings and things like that. So that's the main difference. Additionally, student committees would be more involved with the school while student executive officers would take a heightened role with the board. So that would be the difference.
And one thing when it comes, sorry, one thing when it comes to student reps and student committee is that student committee is more of a collective understanding from the student body that have been elected to that position by that aforementioned student body. Student reps would be the ones that, as have come up here previously, like tell about what has been going on in school, things like that. Student committee are the ones that listen to the respective clubs, but they're concerned specifically about what has been going on within student body, controversies, things of that sort, and make sure that it gets to the people that actually have the resources and ability to change whatever is going on. For example, a singular student does not, normally doesn't have the, you know, overwhelming ability to make a change within the district. However, with the student committee, what we are hoping is that student voices will have an impact that actually benefits both themselves, the district, and the future generations to come. Student executives are, would be the ones that sort of help carry through that process, help facilitate it to both the Board of Education and also to, and relay information from the Board of Education to the student committees, who then would in turn relay it to the student body of the respective high schools and District 204 overall. Just the main difference is that it's just more consolidated because as it stands right now, it's extremely difficult to have multiple people all have, with different viewpoints, all of a sudden like trying to convey it. It's very hectic. That's something that we learned this year. It's difficult to have one person or have like three people email the same principal about multiple different things and then actually have it work. By having one student executive from each school, we hope that it actually runs more smoothly. And we're hoping that we can actually make more of a difference.
So, on slide, I'm sorry, on slide three, you have, you have, I'm sorry, am I on the wrong slide? Slide four. This, am I looking at the wrong? I'm looking at the structure slide, the slide that says structure, it has six students, right?
That's the current structure.
That's the current structure. And now you're saying you want five to six students from each high school as your, part of your committee. Those who would get on the committee would go through this process that you talked about, either through self, or recommendation as you explained. From this pool of the committee, you would then have an election for your executive officers. Am I correct so far?
Yeah.
Okay, and you just want a wider range, a wider pool of student voices as to feed into what you bring into the board meetings.
Yeah, because right now, it's, it's two people from each school. And I love our student board and I love all the people on it, but we have so many people that live in this district. And a big point of discussion was diversity and how do we really make sure we're including diversity without making it seem like, oh, you got in because we need a diverse perspective? Because then there's potential feedback on that. Or just, oh, you're in this because you're really smart, because then there's more potential feedback on that. And so, we really, we had a great discussion with the Oswego School Advisory Board. Thank you to Dr. Howard for also setting up that meeting. And so, we thought in the district of 204, this is the best way for us to accomplish that, is that really looking at diverse perspectives in the student committee and then maybe having a more centralized understanding as an executive officer just to mitigate those relationships between everyone and make sure that the point of contact is always getting through in a clear, concise way instead of just a bunch of people trying to talk to each other. Yeah.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it. I needed that clarification.
No problem.
All those names were, labels or roles were kind of overlapping for me. I want to commend the group in thinking about the long-term sustainability of the structure. And I, I can see you guys really thinking through that and I appreciate that. One, one word of caution is, it's taken a while for us to figure, figure out what the system is. So, one of my concern is the learning curve and how are you going to message this to the rest of the student body for them to understand what this new structure is? And kind of to what Board Member Fosdick was talking about in terms of understanding the commitment, some of it I feel is a little, sounds a little too technical, although I appreciate the nuanced thinking behind it and the intention behind it. It's not to say that I agree or disagree, but just, I, it's just a word of caution in terms of the learning curve and how this will be understood and the kind of students it might draw in to participate.
Yeah, and that's a great point that's being brought up. Because one of our biggest concerns with holding regular elections is we were like, do people in our school know what Student Advisory Board is? So then we're like, is this going to be kind of like a little bit of a popularity contest? Or is anyone going to run at all, which is why we defer to this system? And so, I think the biggest part of that would be us having initiation sessions with people who are being elected, talking through what's going on. And that's why we also think it's really important for the junior Student Advisory Board members to be the first executive officers, so we can really show them what we're looking for and what we're actually doing. Because some people might not have any idea what's going on. And so, instead of introducing all of these new roles, we're introducing student committee the first year and then having them look at us as executive officers to then be able to determine what they'd like to see in executive officers in upcoming years.
And another thing when it came to people actually knowing what Student Advisory Board is and actually making sure that we get the awareness, and getting the awareness actually spread out to the entire student body, is that one of the responsibilities of the student committee would be to organize events regarding the topics or the, the actions that they wanted to take, the tasks, I believe was the word that we used. And that could be done through presentations, through some participation. Like, for example, I know that Wobonzi, they have their own beginning of the year assembly that they do outside, you know, for events, for homecoming, stuff like that. Having sections within that to sort of remind people of the elections that may come up. Of course, the elections will not be happening next year due to, once again, that lack of awareness of our responsibilities and also the existence of the club unfortunately. But as it stands right now, once it gets into the future point where the awareness of the club hasn't spread out to a wide, to the wide student body, at that point, it would be the future, the future student committee's roles to actually work on those elections. So, that's why there's a difference between what next year will be and what we hope that the future years will be. Because we, as we learned, as we've mentioned before from that recycling proposal, change, especially when it comes to a wider range, is never quick. It's always gradual, sometimes taking place over an entire school year and even then stretching on to another school year. So, we want to make sure that we don't rush through things. We want to make sure this is a system that lasts, that outlasts us, whether that be after our graduation, after our, after our siblings have graduated, after we've moved on from the district. Regardless, we want to make sure that it has a wide and lasting impact on this district for the better.
And then, sorry to draw the answer to this question, but we're also getting approval for social media where we also again have people interact with the student committee on things like Instagram, because I run the Instagram of two honor societies in my school. And it's really important because sometimes people don't know what's going on. But all high schoolers have that thing where they hear executive position, they're like, that, I want that, you know what I mean? But sometimes they don't know what that is. So having a clarification through seeing what these people are doing in their roles. Like, hey, if we go to the candidate fair, which I know some of our board members attended, and we just talk to people about, hey, like, these are the things that we're also doing and how does that connect to our local government and our district and things like that and the ways that you can also make a change.
And, sorry, just one last thing when it comes to the student committee representatives or the student executives, regardless of which one. The reason that we want to make sure that, even after, you know, through all the auditing processes that we do have in place, that teacher recommendations, the people at the student executives actually going through each of the applications, make sure that they're viable candidates and also the elections. We do understand and realize that at some point, these might, some students might just be like, oh yes, I've made it. That's it. It's a good thing for college apps. What else do I need this for? And that is an unfortunate reality, but that is something that, that is one of the reasons why we are trying to, we want to put in a potential system for removal from the post. We want to make it so that there are actual consequences to not fulfilling your duties. If it's just, oh yes, I got in here and whatever. But then, you know, and if that persists, then there won't be any change. But if we actually put in consequences like, oh yes, now you haven't been doing anything. Like, you've literally just been sitting there or like you haven't been attending anything, then there's really no point for you staying on there because you don't bring the necessary diversity. You don't bring the voice that we expect you to bring as a student representative. So there is a potential for removal and that's one of the reasons why we wanted that there to begin with.
Thank you. I, I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness. I would give a suggestion to record your intention behind your thought process for each of these elements that you talk to us and how you're operationalizing it. Because although the intention is good, maybe the outcome or the effect may not be there in the future and you may need to go back to the intention to tweak that. So, you have all good ideas, just record it. Make sure that you have that written down and I look forward to seeing how this plays out. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Karubas.
As somebody who was president of the Environmental Club and was unable to get the recycling program working, I appreciate, you might need to adjust the timeline a little bit. I think the only thing that I haven't heard here yet is, is the liaise part. Make that part of kind of your thought process. As we, when we talked to District 308, we learned so much. And they are a year or two ahead of us. Let's take some of that knowledge, let's take some of that tidbit. So, don't feel like we can't go back to them. They offered, they're willing. Let's, we've got a good roadmap, let's speed that up as best we can. But there, there's going to be bumps, there's going to be, you know, roadblocks. They've done some of that work before, so let, if you do hit those roadblocks, let's reach out to them. And so, I would put into your calendar internally, what's 308 doing? Let's check in with them every two, three months. That's it. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grover.
I have a few questions. I loved the presentation. I remember when you guys had come earlier with your research for the surveys and you came up with the recycling project and that was great. Were your other two ideas based off, off the surveys?
A little bit, but I think, it's like for me, the foreign language thing was like a little bit important because we had a discussion about something else with English as a second language program. And then I just started thinking about this. Because I'm friends with a lot of people who, they're the translators in their family, for their parents, for their grandparents and things like that. And I feel really grateful that I'm not like in that position because I've seen firsthand how difficult it can be, especially when you're a kid. Because sometimes you don't know what that legal, like terminology even is and you don't know what's going on. And as a junior, the threat of college...
Alright, we're back. So where were we?
I'm really sorry, can you?
Ms. Grover was asking questions.
Yeah, can you?
Yes, I think she answered that one, so I have a just a few more, you know, um. Piggybacking off of uh Ms. Jane's, I think what would help if you had an organizational chart. Cause then you could see where it's all getting together.
Like a flow of.
Oh, like a flow chart, that would be helpful, um. The other thing I was gonna say is slide fourteen, the teacher recommendation one.
Yes, okay.
My only suggestion is sometimes um there are students who aren't seen. Um in the classroom, it might be the shy introvert um child, but they know, like you said, they have the quiet leadership qualities. That the teacher may not notice, so I don't know if there's a balance that you could have of self nomination and they could go to the teacher and then the teacher could write a recommendation. Because as you said, sometimes it's character, um they may have the GPA, they may have the character, but the teacher may not notice them. Um that's one of the suggestions, then the other one is. When you're talking about when you're marketing it so to speak or. There are so many student organizations, like you have Student Advisory, I don't know um what the position is called when the person who comes from your school speaks here, student representative. Then you have Youth in Government, um so you have all these different student organizations, so a person might get confused. What is the difference, um if I join this, what would I be doing, if I join this, what would I be doing? Expectations, um that's really important if you can talk about when you are telling the students about how much time commitment you have. You you're undertaking because a person may not know, they might see like, oh, I all I have to do is read the deck and. Ask questions, but there's so much prep work that goes into it, so I think that's really important to lay out the expectations before a person signs up. So those are my only suggestions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, um okay, so you know. The concept of student voice, I mean initially sounds really simple and like, hey, we just put some people in the room. From the students, you know, representing the high schools and boom, we we're gonna get this. And I really, really appreciate all the work that um this team has put in to studying this and also experiencing it. Cause I know it's been time consuming for all of you, including the meeting with Oswego. And all the other meetings you have prior to our meetings before you sit in here for a late discussion. Um so I I really, I I it's much more complicated than people think um when you step back. I also think um things move slow, I mean it's a huge um endeavor to really do this the right way. And I love the words about having this be a legacy thing that affects not only today's students, but the ones into the future, so you wanna do it the right way. I also, so you found out it's very time consuming, um I think it is um. I think you also probably found that a lot of the board topics are not interesting and not uh very relevant to things you care about. Um I mean, there's a mixture, but there are certainly a lot of things that you're like, I don't wanna hear about that, so. Um I do think it um it takes a lot of effort to really figure out how you wanna fit into the whole board process. And um I really appreciate and welcome that effort that you've put into it. Um I do have, and I know I sent you a bunch of comments ahead of time and thank you for incorporating um many of those. I do still have a problem on slide nine, I guess I would just really ask you to look at the wording about the using that word grievance. And make that much broader, like I do think that the student um board will bring in grievances certainly. But you also will bring in ideas and uh concepts that you want us to consider. So grievance to me sounds like it's kind of like a a complaint board, like you know, come to this, you know, Student Advisory Board and give us your complaint. So we can take it to the to the district, so I I would ask you again to look at using that terminology in a much broader broader way. Um and then my other question too is on slide seventeen. So when you talk about creating presentations. That's, so that's the executive coming back from attending one of our meetings to talk to the committee, is that correct?
Yeah, um so essentially the thing that I was thinking about is that um there are videos of these meetings which are great, um so that can be uh. Maybe an executive officer is like, hey, I just think the way the board worded it was the best way I can explain it to you, so. Write down a timestamp, hey, this is where it is, um because we all have like the YouTube video, we know where it is. Um but then also sometimes just summarizing it because again, uh the verbiage used in meetings can be difficult for all students to understand. Um so just, you know, concisely expressing points and the most important things that you've learned from these meetings um is really important. Um and just an overview, like, hey, these are the things I heard, what did you hear from Niqua, what did you hear from Wabonzi? And just quickly going through these, we're in high school, we make slides presentations like twenty-four seven, so like all of us know how to do it. And then we can make them pretty and stuff like that too, so it's just kind of using those skills. Um and then also I just think questions are really important because people have so many ideas about so many things. But they never get there because they weren't asked about it first, it can be hard to get into a discussion and be the first one to talk. Um but that doesn't mean that someone doesn't have a valuable idea to share with their group and a valuable idea to create something that might. Uh again, have its own legacy past the um past like their graduation and things like that. So I think it would be great for the executive officer to keep those things in mind, like, hey, what are we thinking about this? What do you, how do you think that would look like in the context of Matia? Maybe if it's a specific grade, how do you think that would look like for Wabonzi juniors, um things like that. And so those specific people with those specific backgrounds can give us a little bit more information about things like that.
Yeah, another thing on those presentations is that while the executive officers would be creating presentations for the meetings, for the um, I believe it is the student committee. The uh student committee of itself would be um most welcome and um encouraged to um. Bring forward ideas and topics for the um saying execu- executive officers to bring to the Board of Education, whether that be through presentations within the meeting itself individually. Um regardless, the student committee exists to number one, um help represent the voices um of the student body to the executive officers. Who will then represent the voices of the board to the student committee, sort of a give and take relationship to make sure that. Um there are no misunderstandings that might occur at both the district level and also the individual school level. That is the main reason for this sort of structure, otherwise it would just been consolidated into just executive officers. But by broadening out our um our reach to um the student committee, it just allows us to have more diversity in terms of. Uh perspectives and also just the people that um bring forward their own um ideas and viewpoints and experiences to such a um massive undertaking.
Okay, my last question, so the juniors that are on the board now, are they all wanting to stay or are they like, I had enough of this?
Um I think I can speak for all the juniors when we say that um while it has been a um. Somewhat of a time commitment, that is just to be sure, um it is something that we wanna continue. Um personally speaking, it has been an excellent opportunity just to um find out how the district works. Um it's always been something I'm curious about and being able to see it work firsthand is an amazing opportunity and also just because. It's a for me to actually create a change for, I have two younger sisters who both go to the district and. To be able to leave behind something for them as they go on to elementary school, um middle school, high school, is something that I wouldn't give up for the world. So this is something that I'm extremely excited for and that is one of the main reasons why.
Yeah, again, all the juniors would love to participate, uh we have so much pride in our districts as well, we have pride in our schools, um go-go Mustangs. But we also have pride in the district, um I've seen during this Youth in Government Springfield weekend where we're bragging to all of these other people about. Hey, um yeah, I go to District two oh four, just so you know, things like that, but yes. We wanna make sure that District two oh four is the best place it can be because it's been nurturing to us. And we wanna extend that kind of feeling to everyone in our district because we know sometimes people have struggles and they have things that they're going through. But we want this to be a place where not only can they voice those struggles, they can also find ways to be more creative. They can find ways to push boundaries on what students can really do within their um district. And as in District two oh four, we expect excellence in all ways, shapes and forms, and this is a way that we really think we can um achieve that.
And just one final thing, um the student life is not just about grades, not just about clubs. It's about being able to, it's the experience of being a student, um while that may include the grades and clubs, it's also. The um your friends, your um family, it's about everything combined until that makes you a student. Um and that's something I've experienced over, you know, my the entirety of my education within this district. And that's something that I hope to actually push to people that either focus too much on the school or focus too much on the friends. I want people to understand that to be a student, you need to embrace both possibilities and I think this brings us an excellent opportunity to push forward. That to student body and also push forward that to anybody that may come after us.
Cause it's our community too, so we wanna do the best we can for it.
Gosh, I totally love what you're saying, so thank you so much. We do, I reiterate what many of the board members said, we completely value and look forward to continuing to grow the student voice in our um. Our actions and um words, so thank you. Alright, we will now have our presentation from Dr. Christine Cipio, Sally Osborne, Kim Maloney and Beth Amade.
Good evening.
Thank you for hanging in there.
Thank you, uh board, we are um excited tonight to give you um information related to our annual student services update. Um this aligns with Board Policy six one twenty and Strategic Plan Goal one, which is a focus on student development. Tonight, I'm um accompanied by Sally Osborne, the principal of Prairie Children Preschool. Kim Maloney, principal of the District two oh four STEPS program. And Beth Amade, an assistant director for Student Services, she serves both uh at the middle school and high school levels. They'll all be presenting tonight, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to update you uh and the community on the support. Using some of the targeted alter. So um similar to uh last year, we'll give you some fast facts. This year, and we're always a year behind in our December child count, we are, uh our special ed population is increasing just a little bit. We're at three thousand thirty-six students, last year at this time, we were at three thousand eleven. Preschool has gone up from six from six thirty-four to six ninety. And we can talk about um recent legislation that uh pretty much accounts for that difference. Uh our out of district students uh have increased from ninety-seven to one hundred and twelve and our. Similar to last year, uh our largest eligibility eligibility categories are students with a specific learning disability. Uh followed by students who have autism and followed by students who are other health impaired, which cover. Nature. Who need speech language services as well as social work. And twelve percent of all of our district students, well, we are at twelve percent uh eligibility, the state is at seven. Twenty percent Asian and nineteen percent Hispanic. And this year, uh similar to last year, we had no due process hearings. Um when we do have conflict, we are proud to resolve those through uh mediation that's sponsored by the State Board of Education. So just um I know you've heard the acronyms before, but just a little key here, uh we do have board certified behavior analysts. Uh they are part of our DST, District Support Team. And LLI, our Level Liter. Also have Spire, which is um our reading intervention and and curriculum that we're using uh to address phonics-based challenges. Um RBT. Specialized staff that um we put in this year through our ARP, our American Rescue Plan Grant. Um the PAYS Lab is at STEPS and I think I think all of you have seen the PAYS Lab. Uh parents at home, uh if they are experiencing some challenges with getting structures in place for their child. Uh and having that bridge from um school to home. Reports this year are um a little bit different, but we like to keep most of them the same. We do have um seven BCBAs, uh Board Certified Behavior Analysts. Five RBTs, they support the BCBAs, so on the day the BCBA is not in the classroom, the RBT. Gives gives that classroom some relief as far as behavioral support, so that's been something nice that we've added through the American Rescue Plan Grant. Um we do have the targeted curriculum that you'll hear about tonight, LLI and Spire are are alternative curriculums for uh reading. Uh touch math is now a standards-based intervention, it goes all the way through algebra and geometry. Uh for our students with math difficulties and then we also have the Unique Learning System, which is for students um with significant. Uh challenges in learning and that is an another alternate curriculum that we have. This year, our RAP services um went to forty families at seventy hours per month, last year we were at twenty-four to thirty-two. So we've more than doubled that, um and again, that's a licensed clinical social worker who goes into the home, spends some time. Uh with families, getting systems in uh in place so that there can be that continuity, it's not um. It's not any kind of respite work, it's not really work with the student, it's work with the family. Um we continue to offer over two hundred uh professional development offerings to our staff. And we continue with our PAYS Lab, uh Kim has increased that, I'll let her talk about that a little later. Uh increase the exposure uh to work workforce skills that uh can be applied to the community. So as far as our our graphing, we are um are in our students with IEPs with regard to reading. Um this this page represents progress toward grade level expectations. And basically want the, we want the green numbers to go up and the red numbers to go down. So the green represents students working at or beyond grade level. They went from fifteen percent in the fall to twenty-eight percent this winter. So that is uh in numbers, two hundred and thirty-five students to four hundred and twenty-three students. So that's some good growth, it's students that are at or beyond grade level with IEPs. And then in the red, which would represent our students with the most significant challenge, they're two to three grade levels behind, we want that number to reduce. And we went from eight hundred and forty students to seven hundred and six, so we went from fifty-four percent to forty-six percent. So that- Our math growth, again, we want the green- numbers to go down. The green is at or beyond grade level went from 146 students to 319 students who are at or beyond grade level. So from 9% to 20%. And then in the red, again, we want that number to decrease. It went from 841 students to 693 students. So we went from 55% to 45%. So we're showing growth in both our students at or beyond grade- And our 11th grade SAT average scores, there are slight differences you will see, but they are not statistically significant. We are working in special education with smaller groups. So in order to have a statistically significant number, we would have to show a much bigger number. So we are maintaining that number. And now we're, I'm going to turn it over to Beth to talk about Level Literacy Intervention. That's the reading, alternative reading curriculum that we're using. And we purchased that right before, right before COVID. So we had a little bit of a rough start in implementation, but I think we have some nice results.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Beth Amade. I'm really excited to- As Christina kind of set it up for us, talk about LLI and the progress that our students have utilizing this program. Just want to give a brief overview about LLI to start. LLI is a research-based intensive reading support for students with identified deficits, specifically in reading comprehension. LLI works on reading skills through developing strategies in basic word work, comprehension, and a little bit of writing as well, so that students are able to have transferable and applicable skills that goes be- charts that Christina shared with us a little bit. That our students are continuing to not only make expected progress, but in order to close that gap, make more than expected progress. So that transferable skills is really what's important and what LLI gives so that our students are able to take those skills and apply them outside of their classroom where they're getting those and make that progress on those tests that they're getting or in the classroom setting as well, so they can access that Gen Ed setting without those deficits impeding their progress. So I have the amazing opportunity to show you some of our schools that have made more than expected growth. So some of that data that we looked at, there's two main data points that are going to highlight the schools that are going to be included. One of which is really looking at that more than expected growth. So that's schools that had students in the program and those students made more growth than the time they were in the program. So for example, if a student started at a first grade zero-month reading level, after three months, expected growth would be first grade three months. So students that are going to be highlighted and showcased tonight would be beyond that expected growth. So that's really that closing the gap. Aside from that, we're talking about the transferable skills. So students that made more than expected growth and then also were represented in those charts that Christina just shared with us, that those skills were transferred into their I-Ready scores from fall to winter. So those two together is what is going to place those students on the highlight spotlight that we're about to get into. So the first schools that we're going to spotlight are elementary schools that had more than 50%, or 50% or more of their students making more growth than the chronological time they were in the program. So these buildings listed up here, the numbers are listed below each of their- Students making more than that chronological time that they were within the LLI program. These schools had 100%, so every single student that was accessing this LLI curriculum was making more than that expected growth during the time they were in the program. So that's McCarty, Peterson, Springbrook, White- and Cowlishaw. These are the schools that really those students obtained that transferable skills. So they had more than- So both of those together is what these schools were able to do. Fry, Kendall, Springbrook. All of those students making more than growth and then transferred that to their I-Ready scores. We had one elementary school that had 100% of their students make- Students also transferred those skills to I- I was just Peterson. For a middle school, or sorry, we had also elementary schools who had students make such a tremendous progress on LLI that it was determined that they no longer required that intense level of support. And they were able to return to the general education curriculum full-time. So their skills were on par. So we would call that closing the gap and they were able to return and no longer require that level of intervention. So these schools had at least one student who were able to return to Gen Ed. So Kendall Longwood, Steck, Brookdale and Welch, which is a really big, exciting time for those students. For middle schools, we had Fisher Middle- Are making more than growth, more than expected growth. So more growth than the time that they were in the program, which is really exciting for Fisher. And again, Fisher as well, 50% of those students also transferred those skills to I-Ready. So were able to make more growth than expected on their I-Ready scores. And then we had Fisher and Skullen also had students who made so much growth in the program that they were able to return to the general education curriculum and no longer required that intense level of intervention that LLI provides.
Oh, I'm up next. All right. Good evening. As Dr. Cipio said, I'm Sally Osborne. I'm the principal at the preschool. I'm excited to be here tonight and talk a little bit about preschool. Just to get started, oops, I always say, you know, who do we serve? And students come to us through three different kinds of channels. We have students that come to us whose parents are paying tuition for, for them to attend preschool. We have students who come to us because they have individual education programs or IEPs. And then we have students who are enrolled with us because they are part of our at-risk program, which would include like our Title I preschool, and then our students who are enrolled through our Preschool for All grant. Whenever I come and talk about preschool, I always have to highlight the staff. Curriculum night- The staff at the preschool, all our teachers have professional educator license with endorsements in early childhood, general education, early childhood, special education. So our teachers are very highly qualified. We also have coordinators on staff, so administration on staff. We have speech and language pathologists, psychologists and social workers, certified school nurse. So all of them are providing supports to our students. Even students sometimes that are not identified, they're still getting some supports in the classroom just because those people are pushing into that classroom. Always- Number of teacher assistants, as well as secretaries and then a registered nurse. And I have to say, we could not run the preschool without these groups of people. I don't know if any of you have been here doing drop-off and pickup, but they are our primary people who are moving- Working at the preschool. Have to go back and forth between glasses and not glasses. So who do we serve? So the preschool is Monday through Friday, morning and afternoon. We have- Inclusion classrooms are a combination of students who attend because they're paying tuition, students with IEPs, and then students who are attending through our grant program. We have two Title I classrooms. So again, those are students who are attending, who reside in those home Title I school buildings for elementary school. We have seven self-contained classrooms and those are those smaller classrooms. All the students in those classrooms have IEPs. Has a little bit smaller teacher-to-student ratio. And there's quite a bit of direct instruction in those types of classrooms. We also have a bilingual classroom at the preschool. I don't know how, how many people are aware of that, but we have a bilingual classroom at the preschool, taught 90% in Spanish and 10% in English. And then I always want to highlight, we also have a phonological-only classroom and- Who have significant articulation needs. When I look, when we look at where our classrooms are, we're kind of all across the district now. So we have four locations that we have preschool classrooms. We have classrooms- Very much grown over those last 11 years. Always want to talk a little bit about what do we provide? What is, what is it like for preschool? We really provide high-quality, developmentally appropriate instruction. We are meeting the needs of all our students through really a strength-based, play-based approach. One of the things that we use in terms of curriculum is called Creative Curriculum and it's really our framework. The Creative Curriculum is- By the Illinois State Board of Ed. And really, when you look at that curriculum, it is like a teacher-engineered environment with child-initiated activities through center. Have a combination of large group, small group, and one-to-one instruction within that structured daily routine. In terms of content- We, I think it was probably four years ago, I'm not sure how long it's been now, probably five, had a group of teachers and SLP work with a curriculum specialist. And we developed seven units of study. So we rotate units every other year. And all the units are based on the Illinois Early Learning and Development Standards. So this year, our units are all about me, me and where I live, and healthiest me I can be. The other piece in terms of what we're providing at the preschool, we're really focusing on social-emotional learning as every other school in the district is. And so we have actually two curriculum that we're using right now. One is called PATHS, Promoting Alternative Thinking Strategies for Preschoolers. And then we have multiple classrooms that are piloting Second Steps. The thing about Second Steps is it's also being used at elementary and middle school. So it's a really nice, when we're looking at alignment and kids moving on, we will probably most likely move into Second Steps within the next year or two with all the classrooms. The other piece about looking at the- Can, they can provide appropriate instruction. We're also- All areas that are listed up there. We actually, the teachers do that three times a year. And included in that assessment, along with observations, is also portfolio assessment. So we're collecting artifacts from students and looking at their growth. That's collected three times a year, fall, winter and spring. And then three- I did want to talk a little bit, and I've talked before when I came to the board about this, the preschool for all. So we have funded through the state of Illinois for 80 slots for preschool for all. And so those students come to us based on a variety of at-risk factors. The thing about receiving that grant money from the state is that they also come and visit us every three years to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing. So we were visited, and the last time we were visited was in 2021, which was kind of in COVID years. And so they actually did it in two parts. And we had five classrooms visit- Just to step back a little bit, there's two parts of the preschool for all monitoring visit. One part is called a compliance checklist. And that checklist is really looking at documentation, wait lists, screening procedures, assessment procedures, lesson plans. And then the second piece of that monitoring- Classroom, classroom environment, where they have monitors actually- Come to a teacher's classroom and- Looking at that learning environment. Of 5.14, which scores of five and above are considered to reflect developmentally appropriate practice. We receive the Gold Circle of Quality rating, and I'm going to read to you what that actually means here. The Gold Circle program meets or exceeds specific- Instructional quality in all program administrative standards, including group size, staff-child ratios, staff qualifications and professional development. So I have now, like I said, I've been here 11 years. We've been visited three times. And we've had the Gold Circle quality each time that I have been here. So I'm very pleased with that because it's quite a lot of work on everybody's part. And then just the last slide I have is why, why Prairie Children Preschool? Again, I present this a lot when I, for Curriculum Night, especially to community families. I'm always like, I highlighted our high-quality staff, certified staff, including related services. That's, that's one of the whys. We are using a research-based curriculum, instruction. All our classrooms are implementing those units of studies. So- All the outcomes are same, are the same for students because we're looking kind of at the same information. And then all those standards, the Illinois Early Learning Development Standards, are actually aligned with the kindergarten standards. Also, another why is just our assessment process- Is also that overall global developmental assessment that we're doing three times a year with a teaching strategies goal. Another why Prairie Children Preschool is just special education programming. We really have a continuum of options for special education programming at the preschool level. Again, our staff are very knowledgeable about special education and instructional practices, are able to easily differentiate for a wide range of students. And then the last two things is why transition to elementary school. Again, we're part of the IPSD family. So there's a lot of similarities for parents when they're looking at registration, using ParentView, busing, all of those things. And then the other piece of transition to elementary, that every single student who has an individual education program or an IEP has a meeting with a home elementary school for that transition process. So we're really working hard- This is from preschool to the elementary school to be as smooth as possible for both that student and that family. And then lastly, again, I have quality of programming. We really offer a high-quality preschool because of our staff, because of our developmentally appropriate instructional practices. That was my last slide. Does anyone have any questions?
I think we'll- Good evening, everybody. You guys know I'm going to start out by bragging about my young adults. And we know that I have the greatest young adults in the district. And it's been an effort since a lot of them were in preschool, all the way through elementary, middle and high school. We get to reap the reward.